The time being set thirty, I hereby call on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, our meeting of the Town of Hanson Planning Board to order at six thirty. With that call to order, the attendance of the full planning board is here, as well as the town planner. Our administrative assistant is absent this evening. I'd also like to announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on women Hanson community access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at WHCA.tv. First, I have a business on our agenda this evening. After our call to order is the approval of the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four public meeting minutes. What's the will of the board?
Motion to accept the minutes of April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is a motion made by Mr. Kevin, seconded by Mr. Cohen in regards to approval of the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four public meeting minutes. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all was a favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Paul, you were able to review those minutes?
Yes.
Do you have a form for them? Tony's got that. Mulligan's form?
Mulligan.
Mulligan, thank you. I keep saying Mulligan.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for you.
Mr. Kevin.
Do we have a recording or any minutes for the meeting we had at town meeting?
Yes.
So, are we gonna approve those as well?
It's not up for tonight's meeting, so that would... But yes, next week.
They will. Next meeting, they will be ready.
Sorry, I just pulled the tour. I knew we had other minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. We have a few moments between now and the six forty board business, but if anybody on the board wanted to take the meeting out of order, I'd certainly... Motion made by Mr. Kevin?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cohen to take the meeting minutes, to take the meeting minutes on agenda out of order. We could do that this evening because the only thing that we have on our agenda is board business. There's no public hearings and there's no appointments. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all was a favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will go a little bit out of order and go into our board member subcommittee updates. There have been no updates for most of the open space, and I'll let the town planner update in regards to the last meeting that OCPC had. Mr. Ellis?
Nothing new at this point.
For the High Street Park? Mr. Cohen?
No update except for our next meeting will be June twenty-sixth.
That's for economic development?
Economic development. As far as master plans steering committee, we have our chapters to review and we're coming to close on our chapters.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a quick question.
Mr. Kevin?
Was, I know we've just got copies of the economic development portion of the plan. So, is that something you're gonna give to the rest of that committee for them to look at or...
To do economic development?
Yeah. Because, I mean, that's really about them, you know?
Yeah, I can bring up June twenty-sixth. You know, we were supposed to have a meeting earlier, but our board only consists of three members, so it's tough when one person can't make it right now.
That means, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, town planner?
May fifteenth, Wednesday, this master plans steering committee will be meeting in town hall. Great. With three in from O'Callaghan Planning Council, five-thirty upstairs.
Well, good. I'm just gonna bring that in.
So, should be working with them to just go over the chapters and get any comments. If there's any comments at the board, the members of the board have, either in writing through an email or writing down, get them to me, I can get them to her.
Anything else, Mr. Kevin?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Bernardo?
I'm none.
Okay. Moving on to board business, we're gonna go into a discussion, discuss results of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four town meeting. Town planner?
Well, disappointing, to say the least, but I'm on a personal level, which really doesn't count, but on a personal level, I'm not surprised. I just think that there's probably a lot of negative press out there, and I think it's probably inevitable. But again, it's unfortunate. If the town winds up out of compliance, I think it's gonna hurt us in the long run more than anything else, but again, I've always said it's up to the citizens. I can only, I can only do my job and keep some compliance and bring it to the citizens, and they have to make the choice, you know? I can only provide the information the best I can. But I think in the long run, they'll find out. You know what? We don't know. We're in compliance till December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I guess we'll have to see between now and then, between now and January second, two thousand and twenty-five, what happens.
And procedurally, between now and then, we will be, more than likely, or most likely, probable, that we'll be having public hearings and/or the board to look at October, correct?
Yes. As you see on the agenda, one of the things that's listed is, I had filed a pre-adoption review application with the state, and they took a look and they gave us feedback. There was six items listed. I would call them minor in nature, realistically.
Oh, the recommendations?
Yeah. Some of them, we did have a Zoom meeting. Had a Zoom meeting with them, along with Liz Linden from town council. And let me just...
While the town planner's looking up his information, I myself, I wanted to say thank you to the board for hearing my motion and affording a citizen the opportunity to decreed it during a very difficult time. So, I wanna make sure I put that under, thank you for hearing my motion the other evening and out. Unfortunately, I think that, I think that me personally, like the planners saying, me myself personally, I think the town's not keeping its powder dry and not shooting before it sees the whites of the eyes, but it is what it is. We're definitely gonna be in the thick of it now, so.
Time will tell.
Yeah, time will tell.
I don't think it's gonna be that bad. I think it's the best thing to do, myself, it's my personal thing. They have to have their eyes opened a little further to understand what they're doing.
Sure.
Sure.
So, Tony, I see on page two of the letter, they've got six.
Yes, so I put that up on the screen. So, there's six items listed. Number, first one is, this says that there are some discrepancies between zoning restrictions and the draft zoning and the submitted compliance model. I asked them to sort of send that along to me because I wasn't exactly sure what they were talking about. Including requirements for lot size and building type, so it's, I think it's probably some minor stuff. Step backs in lot coverage, please ensure the compliance model matches the requirements in the district when applying for district compliance. So, we're gonna go back and make sure that if we get to that point, and when we get to that point, that everything matches, i's dotted, t's crossed. Number two talks about two parcels within the district, one being known as eleven oh one dash one Main Street, which would be the property behind the Ocean Spray, known as, let's say, the Marsden Marangello property that's on the south side of the tracks, and twenty-two Foster Street, which is an odd type of situation where it's sort of like a lot within a lot. It doesn't really have any frontage. So, they bring up that these lots have, regarding frontage and access, both lots do have access, but they say that if, you know, if they don't sort of conform to the zoning, then you have to take their capacity, and their capacity being, they call it fifteen units per acre, that's the capacity. You have to sort of pull that out of the equation. When I see this equation, there's an Excel workbook that the consultants use, and they punch in all this information, and it comes, and it makes the determination as to whether the zones are compliant. I was able to work with Krista Nagaha from VHB. I sent her this letter, and she was able to actually look at those two parcels and pull out, let's say, their capacities, and the district will still work. So, the district as outlined on the map that was as part of the article will still work. Number three...
Tony, just real quick, with number two.
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Quote-unquote sufficient frontage, was that ever a prerequisite by the state, by EO HLC in regards to creating?
No.
So, just for the record, I wanna say that again, sufficient frontage was never a recommendation or a requirement that came down from the state for the planner to do his job in creating the zone?
Correct.
So, you're saying that they're changing the rules midstream?
I'm saying that, I suppose...
And you're saying...
I suppose that it was a bit of a surprise because it's like, well, where was this in the memo? This was never really discussed in the memo of, oh, well, we're gonna look at and make sure that all the lots that are in there have frontage.
Yeah.
One of the other ones here talks about the ninety percent upland requirement, you know, and says, you know, and you go, well, it's, other than using GIS, it's very difficult to say exactly, does that lot have ninety percent upland or doesn't?
Right.
You know, and I go, so now you're looking at this?
Funny, I think that that's mentioned here quite a few times at this board, right?
But I mean, when, when part of their, part of their equation, when you take your district and you put it into their compliance model, it removes all this stuff. It removes roads, it removes town-owned property, it removes water, it removes wetland areas. So, when they threw that in, it was a bit of like a, oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, now you're getting a little nitpicky, I think.
Changes the game a little.
You know?
Well, I'm gonna assume that there's places all over the state that have created these zones and swamps, knowing that there's no way anyone will be able to build anything there, so I think that's what they're trying to look at.
Well, see, but the thing is, within the equation, it takes out for that, so the state sort of like probably knew that, yeah, there might be some towns that are gonna be like, okay, well, we'll put it in the middle of McQuarney Pond.
Yeah.
You know, and they're like, not gonna happen. The equation's gonna say, nope, you know, you can take that out.
Yeah.
But those two, those two in particular, I thought were like, okay, we're getting to the wire here, and you're sort of throwing this out. It changes the game a bit, you know? Did he talk about the site plan? You know, this is recommended reviewing, it was a site plan review for section...
Number three.
Yeah, number three.
Zoning map for section...
I'm sorry, number three was, talks about the aquifer. Our current aquifer map, if you look at the GIS, it, which is the zone two, the lines are pretty much the same. There really isn't any overlap.
Section four seems comparatively argumentative.
Yeah, review this, Dan Seifert, our objective and non-discretionary consultant town council to ensure that this section aligns with the existing case law concerning site plan reviews for as-of-rey uses. So, one thing, obviously, moving forward, is I'm going to work with town council, I've already started working with Liz Linden, and I'm actually going to go apply for a third technical assistance grant, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to bring VHB back on board versus starting with someone new, and work with them, town council, go through these six items, and again, just make sure that we have all the i's dotted, t's crossed, and then pursue, if we're all still here, moving into October.
I see that EO HLC, number four, that they recommend, that's great, thanks for the recommendation. Plan is gonna talk with council, but there was a lot of work that went into that specific sections.
Isn't all this pretty much mute?
Well, let's put it this way...
Trying to get that to rack together or...
Well...
I mean, how much do you wanna work on if it's not gonna go forward?
Well, let's put it this way, right now, we're still in compliance, I still gotta keep us moving forward.
Yeah.
I have no choice but to keep...
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I have to keep us moving forward because, let's say in October, the town changes their mind and says, you know what, we are gonna go with it. Now, now I have about two months to...
Yeah, look at that.
To make it work. I just gotta keep doing my job and keep us in compliance and keep it moving forward, and if it fails, then it fails, but at least if I have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, again, and it's, then that means when it, if and when it ever goes for district compliance, it's, it's right. Everything's right.
Well, it's, I think I could probably do half of what we quoted, too, you know? So, you just don't know.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Kevin?
Item five, I said section two definitions, right? This is the definition of a lot area requires a ninety percent of a lot to require for zoning compliance. So, having been on conservation for as long as I have, I can tell you right now that there isn't a single site large enough to comply with any of this that is ninety percent up. So, does the state know this? And, you know, what's the mechanism for them understanding that? You know, we can't comply with this because we don't have any way that we could be complying?
Well, just for clarification, Kevin, you mean ninety percent in the area that was proposed as the zone?
Right, so in the zone, I'm saying, you know, go wider than that, so because if you can't comply with it within the zone that you've created, you're gonna find it somewhere else. So, what I'm saying is, there is no way to find it anywhere else because even the lots that we have that are within that zone, right? Because, you know, if you think about eleven oh one, right, and across the street is probably about forty percent wetland, so there's no way you could reach the ninety percent on that lot or eleven oh one. So, I guess really what I'm saying is like, you know, without getting into the nitty-gritty details, we can't comply with this. So, what's, so what do we do then?
Well...
I mean, there has to be a plan, right?
Well, that's where the consultant's gonna come back in and start punching these numbers back in. So, we look at this and go, okay, so let's say it's, again, the ninety percent is basing on GIS, but let's say as what you said, okay, they kind of look at it, now we're getting down to this.
Yeah.
And they go, okay, so, yeah, we have to make adjustments because there's some areas here that maybe need to come out. Okay, so then maybe we look at, you have to remember, this is an overlay district.
Yeah.
And so, the overlay district, we're saying ninety percent. Okay, so maybe the overlay district, we say seventy percent.
Okay. So, my problem with this, right, is, and I won't go on and on about it, but I think the point that I'm really trying to make is that the state says to us, this is what we're looking for, right? So, we can't give it to them, so now midstream, they're gonna turn it around and say, well, you know, if you can't comply with any of this because you don't have any of those things, we're just gonna change the rule.
Well, the way, well, the way it's gonna work is, we go through this, I'll say this much, the bylaw itself, they didn't have any issues with it.
Huh.
Very, they like, your bylaws look good, you know, other than some minor, they'll say, things. You go through this for your district compliance, and then you turn it in, and then, let's say Hanson says we're going to adopt this, and then you file for your complete district compliance. If they find some things that need adjusting, they will work with you. It's not, they'll shut you down or say, oh, now you're not in compliance. They stated that, you know, if there's things that needs minor adjustments, they will work with the community, and they understand that some of those adjustments may need town meeting approval, which wouldn't happen till, let's say, May of two thousand and twenty-five.
But again, though, if you can't comply with this, right, when it comes down to the point where they say, all right, you have to rewrite the district, and you have to do this, and you have to do that, right? And again, if it, you know, in order for us to do that, we have to go to town meeting, and town meeting is not gonna accept it because this is kind of a combative and argumentative document.
Well, we have to use what they gave us, which is the workbook they gave us, you know? So, that's, but I don't disagree with you with, okay, so now you're talking about this when we've come this far?
Right.
You know, we've come this far, and now, now we're getting into this, we're getting to the deadline.
Yep.
But because other than GIS, we, you're right, I mean, it's almost impossible unless you go out there and actually flag a wetland and put it out there, you know what I mean? It's tough to say what's out there, it's just GIS. And I know that that's what they're working on, too, because their workbooks are all based on GIS mapping.
Right, but that's the same argument I had on those other hearings in the past where, you know, somebody comes in and says, you know, we have ninety percent of upland, when, you know, how do you know that? It gives you haven't actually flagged a wetland, so here we are again, same situation.
Or an approved, or an approved line.
Or an approved line, exactly. And, you know, the state requires an approved line.
Right.
You know, so, I don't know. Man, I get that, that's not hard.
Who's gonna fund it to get somebody to go out, engineer it, come back, and so on? Do you have the money for that?
No, I, we, we don't have to do that.
I mean, if they want a more precise...
Yeah, I think, I think if they, if they did that, I think that pretty much all the communities that probably did adopt it would have it been about face and go, yeah, now you can, now you can place it elsewhere because that's just not gonna happen. They're basing all this stuff is on GIS mapping, different types of maps, and so, you know, if it's, let's say we have, for instance, let's do it for instance, Phillips Road, the town-owned property, okay, if you look at the GIS, is it ninety percent upland? Probably not, you know? So, they say, okay, if it's not, if you could see, if you could see a lot that using GIS is pretty much mostly under the wetland, it's not gonna comply to your bylaw, so you shouldn't count it. But I go, well, didn't the model you guys told the consultants to use already take that into consideration? Because that's what your, that's what your guidelines say, that it's taken into consideration.
It's sort of like a rope-a-dope.
I think it's more like, roll out, roll it out, like, you know how Microsoft will roll out like a brand-new Windows? And then like a week later, they send you all the patches because they rolled it out too soon? And this is kind of what's happened here. They've rolled out something that probably needed a total of five years for really to work, and they, they made everyone try and shove it in three. That's, I mean, that's really, it's, it's not enough time if they're going to get, you know?
I think I keep coming back with bites at the apple. Who's gonna pay for that? Like, your time is valuable, right? And you're a resource.
Depends who you're talking...
So, you're using up that resource because you're dealing with this nonsense.
Well, that's why, that's why I view, I'm going after a third technical assistance grant, which they're...
Right.
Willing to give out, and I let the consultant do, I let the consultant do...
Well, we just voted not to take anything, so they're not gonna give us anything at this point.
No, we're still in compliance. So, the, so, so they, they even said on the Zoom call, you're in compliance till December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. It's January second is where, we'll see what happens. If we're not in compliance then, then I guess we'll see what if anything happens, or if between now and the end of the year, the state sees that there is resistance and they make it, the legislature decides to make a change. I have, I have a, considering that this is such a talking point for the legislature, I'm not sure that they're gonna do a turnaround on it. I think maybe they'll, might grant more time, you know? But I'd find it hard to believe that they would do a turnaround because they really think they're really hot to trot on housing, as you can, you can tell.
Yeah.
Well, the biggest problem was when the governor left, on his way out the door, he passed that, pushed it again, you know? And they didn't, they didn't have time to review it, to really in-depth review of what it was gonna cause the problems and so on, and here we are, I think.
Yeah, again, like I said before, it was rolled out too quick and expected to be completed in a short amount of time. I mean, creating a new district and a new bylaw and all that takes time, it's tedious and it takes time. The larger communities that have large planning departments with multiple people or, you know, consultants on speed dial or the budgets, it's easier for them than, say, Hanson, you know?
Well, I think it was just all the governance, you know, because he, he just wanted to throw it out there, he's out of here, see you later, you guys gotta handle it, and all, but he passed it.
I think he told him a golden hand grenade.
I would agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah, the state legislature went along with it a hundred percent.
Yep, yeah. There were a few, there were a few that, that...
You like that one, huh?
There were a few that absolutely disagreed with it, David DeCoste, so our precinct want to completely disagree with it. I recognize that fact, so that's why I brought that up to put this back up. The problem I have is that the state legislature hasn't done anything with that since, they just kind of set in and forget it. So, he, he may have made a stink in the chamber, talking about it in discussions, but nothing's happened since then, and they could've.
I see, Tony, that, so the other thing that they say here is number six, is that if a zoning map amendment is required for this bylaw change, please ensure that it occurs before applying for the district compliance. If that be the case, that would mean that at October town meeting, we would have to put in not only a zoning map amendment change approval, but also then go into the MBTA's, right? Is that correct? Or is, can we do that all at once? They're just talking about the map.
Well, they talk, yeah, they talk about changing the map.
The map online?
Well, the map that's proposed, and right now, the map as proposed doesn't need to change.
Okay.
Even taking those two parcels, their capacity out of the equation...
Right.
That's still...
So, so if I can ask, so for, for the October town meeting, does our article come back exactly the same way, or does it come back with changes? Or does it not come back at all?
Depends on what happens. So, between now and October, if the state makes any changes, we, between now and October, we have eight planning board meetings unless we need a call special. So, if there's any changes that come down, I think it would be a good idea, and I don't know Tony's shifts, but I think it would be good, if there are any changes that come down, that we do, well, one, that we do a public hearing to explain the changes.
Absolutely.
But two, between now and October, probably have two, I don't know, informationals, maybe at Camp Kewahnee or here or whatever, just, just, you know, procedures aside, informationals to explain to anybody that wants to come down, so that, you know, nobody has to ask any questions about, you know, what's a Pratt place, you know, that kind of a thing, you know? So, if there's changes that are gonna be mandated by the state, certainly, we shouldn't be doing a public hearing, and we'll throw that onto one of our planning board meetings and make sure the work gets out, that if people have questions that...
Yeah, so...
Yeah, a hundred percent.
I'll, I'll be working with, again, town council on this and get their guidance as to, okay, bringing it forward, because we need to address those changes, and I'd like to address them now versus later.
Yep. Does the board, does the board feel necessary to maybe reach out to Caroline Pukwin from EO HLC? Maybe have like a guest appearance of somebody, you know? Prior to last town meeting, I asked, I sent a letter to the Senator Jones offers personally asked if they'd come down to attend our meeting, but I, I don't think they know where Hanson is. So, I don't know if the board thought it might be a good idea to have folks that are invested in this from the state side come down and make an appearance, and maybe have a, maybe have a, you know, twenty-minute, thirty-minute interview with somebody if the townsfolk wanted to come in and talk.
Well, that might attract some people to come to the meetings, sure.
I think it's, it's waiting to see what happens with the other town halls for another month.
I think we should ask the town where the water-resistant boots, so they can take a walk on, boots on their head.
See what happens with the rest of them if they're going to go in a different direction. I don't sense, I didn't even, I think it might be gonna reach out to our state legislature to see if anybody wants to come in and have a talk, maybe Representative Coast would like to come in and talk.
You know, Senator Brady might send this right-hand man again, for sure.
These guys make a living of talking, you should be one.
It'd be regulation statements. I just put it out there that, you know, just as Mr. Ellis, as Doolie pointed out, make an effort, just wanna make sure that we're able in October to say, hey, we've made ton of effort.
So, the thing, the thing that I'm picking up from this at this point is that we're gonna go along like it's gonna happen until year other life. You're just gonna continue working this out and doing what you, what's necessary, right?
Well, yeah, unless...
Unless the money, the grant money runs out, is that true?
Right, I mean, exactly, yeah, I need to get a grant to get, to bring, to bring, to bring them forward, you know? So, unless, I'm gonna keep doing my job unless I get told by this board or the select board or the town administrator in writing, do not do this anymore.
So, it's status quo.
Because that way, if it hits the fan...
Yep.
And I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna get land on.
Well, I like your strategy.
So, for me, it's just, yeah, it's just for me, it's keep going until you just can't go anymore.
State makes a change or is another city gonna change on the town level?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna apply probably tomorrow for the technical assistance grant. I actually reached out to one of the folks that I've been dealing with at the state and gave them an update after they put out the naughty list and the nice list.
What's that, what's the amount of that grant, Tony?
Uh, I, it depends. Uh, I, it depends. Uh, the last one was like nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. They've been giving them out, that's usually around twenty thousand dollars.
Approximately, so there's an up, it's up two?
Yeah.
And are they providing a list of vendors?
They do have what they call house doctors. VHB was one of their house doctors, so they put us together.
Okay.
And so, uh, I'm going to like request that VHB be used again. That way, I'm, I'm already working with them.
Yeah.
And I think that they'll probably go for that unless VHB says that they can't because they're too busy.
Okay. Are, are we on like the, the ground floor of this grant? Like, have other towns received this grant yet?
Yes, we've received it twice.
Yeah, we've received, oh, okay. We've got a new grant.
We got one for nineteen thousand, the other one was for.
They're both, they're both just about twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the first one, the first technical assistance grant we received, we worked through with O'Callaghan Planning Council. The second one, uh, was with VHB. I'm going for a third and hopefully I can get VHB back again.
Any other questions or comments in regards to, uh, EO HLC's pre-adoption review application and/or the discussion about the May sixth town meeting? So now we're gonna move on to zoning application review and your package gentleman, you have a few different zoning application reviews. That, uh, the town planners provided to go before ZBA. And if you take a moment to review those, if there are any questions, comments, concerns. Uh, we can discuss those now so that way we can, uh, have the town planner form a communication back to ZBA. First on the list is an application for a special permit filed under section. Six H and section eight D of the Hanson zoning bylaws. Pineapple Cookie Company for a bakery at one three seven five Main Street, unit three.
Can, can I ask some questions?
Kevin.
Um, where exactly is thirteen seventy five Main Street? Do we know?
It's the, isn't it the crack, what, what we refer to as the.
The old crack, like the.
Corporate company?
Yeah. Oh, so it's in there?
I'm pretty sure that's thirteen seventy five.
I thought that was a thousand.
Yeah, it's where, it's where the, where the women Hanson's first history, isn't it? So you got eleven, it may not be, cause that's eleven, eleven one across the street, eleven ten?
Can I, can I ask a ZBA question on this, or is this specific?
Can you ask the ZBA?
No, I, I wanna ask a, a ZBA related question.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
All right, certainly. So, my question is, um, if we see one of these, you know, Board of Appeals things, that somebody, uh, sends something in. Right, that was a decision that was made on the planning board, right, um. Uh, they supposed to, according to the bylaw, notify us in writing for the reason why they've, uh. Issued a variance on something like we've done. I, I'd like to get by either town councils, um, you know, the way in on that, or if you guys wanna. Spitball it.
Sadly again, if the ZBA issues a variance on something we've approved.
We're looking at this, right, and let's say that this was a hearing with the planning board and someone wasn't happy with what, what the planning board, uh, voted, right? So they go to the ZBA with one of these and they, and they have a hearing, right, and, and the ZBA issues, um, a variance. To overturn what was done in planning.
Bless you.
Does that make sense? Maybe I'm not formulating that question.
It makes, it makes, it makes total sense, but I don't think that. I don't think that they, they can. That would, cause that would come back to planning that the ZBA overturns something that we mandated. Right, uh, they would have to go through the appeal process.
Anybody allergic to bees?
Say again?
Anybody allergic to wasp?
Nope. Who? Yes, I am.
What?
I have an apple pen.
Go ahead, just sit there. Oh, there you go.
You're gonna get angry, right?
Uh, so.
So, I, I mean, it sounds like I'm not formulating my question.
Okay, so. ZBA, and obviously, ZBA is separate from planning.
Right.
Within the bylaw, a ZBA or a planning can be the special permit granting authority if so. Uh, stated in the bylaw.
Right.
Hanson, the special permit granting authority is mainly the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
So, if, for instance, you denied a subdivision. The mechanism is for the applicant to go to court. To appeal, to appeal that decision, not the, not the zoning board of appeals, and that's stated within the subdivision control law.
Right.
And same thing with a ZBA decision. If the ZBA makes a decision, that person has to go to court. They can't come to the planning board to say, hey. Can you, can you overturn it?
Well, you know, well, the reason I ask that is because, uh, you know. I, I don't remember all the details, but I just remember that, uh, we had a hearing in planning, uh, for somebody wanted something and they didn't get it. So they left and now, uh, I read a thing that said that, that, that same, uh, issue was voted on in the ZBA.
But there was a significant distinction because that. Try to, try this without getting into out of agenda, then into trickier waters that will be coming up in the future for a decision.
So if it's coming up in the future, we'll wait, yeah, no problem. I'm just asking a question.
All right, uh, thirteen seventy five, is that next to Hanson Hardwood? Thirteen seventy five.
Right there. That's.
Is that the building next to Hanson Hardwood?
So that's the building we're talking about?
Yes.
It's not the part where the old primary convenience store? Well.
Oh, the Sun, the Sun's outfit order, is it? It was a candy salon?
Yeah, there's a candy salon, real estate place, and I don't know what.
So you think that are a place that moving down to the other, the new hardware stores and all that? Or it might be the.
So. So the hardware store is forty four fourteen. It's in hardware, it's forty four fourteen, yeah. Oh, I didn't think this was further down.
Nope, that's forty fourteen.
So that's a little lot there for the, um, the Ace Hardware.
They're doing car.
Oh, that.
That can.
I know why they.
That's a lot over.
I'm asking, how'd that happen?
Forty four nine.
It's like, it's like, so this, this building is divided up into four different businesses.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, so this application is for one of, one of the units.
It's the three where the primary, um, convenience.
And then.
Okay.
I, I don't know exactly as far as zoning or whatnot, but I just had a couple of comments.
Let's go.
Um, I come from a little bit of a, uh, restaurant background, um. So I would just ask if they have proper venting for the ovens that, that I see here, because I don't think there. Was a similar business there previous. Um, to this application. And then, um. I do know that a, I, I don't know if this is a comment that you're looking for, but, um. Usually it's for a restaurant, you have a, a separate, uh, wash sink for your hands versus for food. And I see one, it looks like a, a three-bay sink, maybe right here by the bathroom. And then the other thing is whether or not the bathroom is appropriate to have the freezer right next to it. Because I, I don't see where the door to the bathroom is.
Would, uh.
So, uh, that might be a border health kinda issue versus.
So how about a comment along the lines of. That the, that the project conformed to all, uh, local border health regulations?
A hundred percent. Is, so is this supposed to be a restaurant? It's supposed to be a bakery?
I, I believe that they, she makes cookies and it's a small type operation.
So the table and chairs aren't for patrons to come in?
Correct. This isn't like, uh, a Denny's or something like that. This is just, she's gonna bake cookies and then it goes out the door and it's. Think of a crumble, but on a local, small level.
Yeah, no, this, this is tables and chairs for people to sit, so when they come in the front door, they can sit and have a cookie. This is like a coffee shop.
I, I actually see it with cookies.
Well.
I actually see it maybe as different. Um, my daughters have, have done. A similar to, they've gone to a similar type of business where. The bakery will have cookies ready to go and then they teach them how to decorate them. So I, I don't know if that's what they're going for. I don't know anything about this.
It won't be sit-down dining and.
I don't.
No.
I'm guessing that it's not sit-down dining.
That's from the scuttlebutt, I've heard, no.
I think it's gonna be like a, uh, people come in, you, let's say kids, for instance, they'll have set, set time for an hour. Come in, I'll teach you how to decorate cookies. That's the gist I'm getting, but.
Isn't that still, isn't that still for public consumption though? But I don't wanna get off the chalk.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the border health is.
Yeah.
And the ZBA and the building department, uh, three different departments that'll handle.
Well, yeah, Tony, I think that's a great, great which is applicability to all border health and, and zone regulations.
It's not, it's not, um, a resource area at all, right? The zoning is sufficient, right?
I don't think there's any wetlands there.
There are, that's why, you know, with that lot, the way it's laid out for the Ace hardware, they didn't have enough square footage to, to build on that site, so. It kept all around it.
And the, the only other comment.
Units underneath there, true.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the only other comment I would make is, I, I, I'm guessing that they mainly wanna use the upper portion, but there might be storage or something underneath. So as long as.
Different, different units, right?
No. So it's four on the top, but don't they connect to the bottom or not?
No, there's a contractor in the line. That's a, that's a, a space of its own.
So it's not like you have to be concerned with the way they're storing, uh, food products?
Yeah, I, I'm only guessing, but, um, cause I, you know, it used to be Nelson Electric down the basement and it was the whole down, the whole basement was its office and shops and stuff. So any contractor that's been there after that's treated the same way, but I don't know for sure.
Only probably get spray cookies.
There you go.
Yeah, have to go through the process. Tony, uh, obviously, planning board welcomes any new business in town and, uh, it's good to see, uh, commercial growth.
So what would you like to motion to just recommend to the ZBA or just, you, you make a motion that. Trying to think of the old language they used to use.
To defer to ZBA.
Just for it, thank, thank you.
That, uh, uh, and the chairman had to take a motion to defer to ZBA with the, uh, additional language conformity to all. Board of Health and zoning bylaws. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Benonato, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Next would be applicant for special permit filed under section six B dot six and section seven D. Hanson zoning bylaws, Kevin McCarthy for an in-law apartment above an existing garage at eight twenty six Winter Street, map one fourteen lot fourteen dash two. Is there, uh, Tony, would you possibly be able to bring up, uh, on, on GIS or on, at GIS, map fourteen, uh, one fourteen lot fourteen dash two?
So has anybody looked at this to see if it complies with the new?
Uh, eight twenty six Winter.
So is this a detached?
No, it's an apartment existing.
It's in a detached garage?
When you guys look on it.
Oh, so it's detached.
An in-law apartment above an existing garage.
Does that comply with that new bylaw?
It complies for, to the in-law bylaw requirement.
Okay.
Did you commit, the new bylaw would have to be detached?
Yeah, the new bylaws are detached. This one's an attached.
Okay, cause I know there was a time where you couldn't have an in-law apartment in the answer.
No, that you do, you can't. You can have in a residence A and a double A zone.
Is there, so it's an estate lot, obviously, it's an estate lot, forty feet of frontage. Is there?
It's, it's just a garage.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. I've driven by it. I mean.
It don't work out there now.
Do you think the lot's big enough for, to possibly have an ADU?
Well, I think, you know, an ADU is, or an in-law is up to the applicant. You know?
Yeah.
It's, uh, so if they choose to have an in-law versus an ADU, that's up to them.
I'm just wondering if they have it, the applicant isn't aware.
Is aware? I don't know.
So, so there's actually no footprint change to this building? So the footprint will remain the same, is that true?
Yeah, it doesn't say, those.
Uh, so thirty-six by twenty-four.
An in-law apartment in an existing area above a garage, eight twenty six.
So that looks like it's the garage, there'd be the doors, this, okay? And that, so that would be the garage, we park, set of stairs, and then above, you come up the stairs and you'll have an apartment. So it's in the, above the garage or in-law. There's your kitchen, your bath. Uh.
So it's actually.
Somewhere in here, there's, not sure where, where they're sleeping, but.
Ha. Studio bed.
It could be like a studio.
So there's really three means to be less as well, right? There's a, there's a.
This looks like, this looks like there's a.
Door to the house.
Yeah, it looks like there's a door here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to ZBA with the same language or the last, uh, compliance of all border health and zoning, uh, regulations.
How many square feet is that, did they say?
Thirty-six by.
Thirty-six by twenty-four.
Four, subtract the shape.
Let's see if someone can do the math in their head. No?
That's about eight hundred and sixty-four square feet.
I was gonna say eight forty-four, come on.
At least you're gonna be able to do that in your head, Joe.
I'm trying, trying. So, motion made by Mr. Benonato. Seconded by Mr. Cohen. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, and opposed, motion carries five to zero.
Were there any comments on that, Mr. Chair?
Uh, same as before.
Okay.
Uh, uh, deferred, deferred to zoning with, um.
Need all, need all local requirements.
Border health and zoning. And the last in this section, application for a special permit filed under section six dot one. Section eight D, section seven G of the Hanson zoning bylaws. Robert Carlson, constructor thirty-seven by twenty-four, detached accessory dwelling unit.
This is the very first one.
Yay! So, at six fifty-nine Liberty Street, map seventy-two lot two.
This is the guy that showed up to all the meetings. So, so this one would be under the new bylaw?
Yes.
New bylaw. So that's eight hundred eighty-eight square feet. I just. Catch that. Which is so small.
Which is, um, conforming to the under nine hundred square feet.
It is, yeah.
Um.
Wow, he's got a busy plan.
So, so this does count? He knows what he's, uh, applying for?
Yes, it does. Uh, this is a, this is the set of plans.
Oh, boy.
I, I can see it.
Yeah, the change is a bit clearer.
So, did this bylaw clear the state for approval?
Yes.
Already, okay.
Yep.
Yep, with, uh, with, uh, with a thumbs up, I think, the stamp that we got back. Last one was a gold star, this one was a thumbs up stamp.
So, so what you have is the existing house here. A shed here. They're proposing.
So they get, sorry, sorry.
So this is the existing, the existing dwelling.
Yeah, existing dwelling, okay.
There's an existing shed here.
Yeah.
This lot is heavily wooded around the perimeter. And then this is the detached accessory dwelling unit. This is, what you see here is for a roof drain, so it'll infiltrate. This is a new septic system. Septic tank. I sewer, sewer line from the ADU to this tank. From the house to the tank and then into a new system which complies with Title V.
So that's in compliance with Title V to have two different buildings access the same septic?
The.
Should be.
Yes, it does. The town, now the border health, I have, they have, uh, they could promulgate their own regulations to whether it be stricter or require something different.
I, I think if I'm not mistaken, I did catch a meeting by border health, and what they discussed was, uh, so long as. The ADU ties into the existing D box. Instead of directly into the, so, so they had to tie into the D box with the existing property.
So they can't go right into.
Can't go, I think that's what the discussion was. I don't know if they voted on it, but I remember hearing that.
Yeah.
That there was a discussion, like, you couldn't put something way on the other side and tie it straight and had it come into the existing contribution. That's the, I'm pretty sure that's what I heard.
Yeah, the, the septic, the septic tank has the capacity because these are, uh, I believe it's two.
Yeah, goes by bedrooms, right?
Yeah, so I think this, uh. Two bedroom in this house and then two here, so a total of four, so the system is designed for four fifteen hundred gallon tank, has the capacity. So it meets.
And it's, and they're putting it on the slab.
Yes.
And they, they've got their reserve area, uh, you know, so.
And I, I will say this, the, uh. So. The, I'm sorry, the. The applicant's engineer, uh, I thought did a very thorough job. Uh, they've submitted architectural plans. They've submitted architectural plans, uh, they submitted elevations.
How nice is that?
Exterior elevations, um, so you could see what the unit's gonna look like.
So, you know, one of my questions, and, and I probably should have asked this back a long time ago. Is, and I, and I think I may have, is, uh, when you look at that, that site, right, and you look at the plan, where the parking is, right? They've made no changes to the driveway, so I guess my question. So I guess my question is, um, when we approve these things, should we be making sure, um, there's enough parking spaces to support, like, so you've got the in-law apartment with potential of four people living there, because you've got two people in one room, right? So, and I don't know what the occupancy rules are, how they're laid out, but if there's a particular number of occupancy for that accessory building, there should be an additional parking to support that, because it, it, and more, like, all, everything we do, it's always about, you know, is the parking lot large enough, uh, you know what I mean?
We, we do have parking requirements.
Okay.
We have, uh, do have parking requirements, we have screening requirements, we have, um.
Sure, and that's in this, like, for this accessory building?
Yeah.
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 So, now, so I guess then my question on this lot is, I, I don't see any upgrades to the existing driveway, so is all of the driveway itself in compliance with the new bylaw? So that would be my question as a proposed.
As a proposed driveway expansion.
So, yes, they're, so the proposed, they're expanding it a little bit?
Right.
To, so that you can fit three cars comfortably?
So are we saying that, um, they, they've looked at the bylaw and they've calculated the size of the driveway based on, uh, the, the bylaw?
Yes, they've done, yes.
They've done that?
They've done a really thorough job.
Then I have no question then.
The application, the application that they submitted, um, went through the bylaw for the ADU.
Mm-hmm.
Listed the section of the ADU and how they were complying with the ADU.
Mm-hmm.
So it's very thorough.
So does this accessory building also have to be ADA compliant? And if so, does the, like, I, I'm wondering how these people are gonna get from their accessory building to the driveway? I don't see anything on there, you know, uh, you know, specifying how they're gonna get there.
As far as walkway, it's, no, it, it didn't show that, but we do have, we do talk about in the ADA, uh, in the ADU regulations about the, I believe it's the zoning board has the ability to waive certain requirements if it's, needs to be ADA compliant. In other words, so if the person that needs that, needs to have ADA access, they can, you know, some of the things they can sort of give a leeway on.
Yeah, cause I know it, it's, in some places, as, as a right, if you build an accessory building with an, with an, um, that's an apartment, that, that apartment has to be ADA compliant, but that's not our bylaw, I guess.
Correct, but we do require that it meet all the building code requirements.
Okay.
So we do, we do have all of that, yeah, Title V requirements, wetlands, all.
Okay. So, so with these types of projects, are they always gonna go right to the ZBA? They'll come before us and then.
Other than this way.
Than this way, yeah.
Correct. They, let, let's suppose if I, if this was, let's say the Planning Board was the Special Department granting authority for this, and this is the first one, every person after that, I would require them to do exactly what this company did and how they.
Yes.
Did it.
Exactly, yeah.
They were, they were that thorough on how they did it, and, uh, being the, it's, they knew they were the first.
Yeah.
And so they, they really, and I'll go back to the, I'll go.
Set the bar.
Yeah, and I'll go back to, they dotted their i's and crossed their t's.
Yeah, I mean, this is good that we, we get to look at this because, you know, we kinda created this, uh.
You remember that gentleman here that was talking before us?
So it's good to look at it to make sure that, you know, okay, so here's the first proposal, and whoever it is, uh, read the rule.
They did, uh, I think this was, uh.
If I'm not mistaken.
Grady, is it Grady? Yeah, Grady Consulting.
If I'm not mistaken.
With them on our shortlist of people?
If, if I'm not mistaken, I think that the applicant was before us in regards to a need that we've heard multiple times, and that is about.
Yep.
Senior housing in Hanson, and for families to be able to stay together.
Well, you know, I'm on the board, so, you know, uh, I, I'm really, I'm just picking it apart cause it's new.
No, that was.
Yeah.
Sorry, John.
No, I said, I'm just picking it apart cause it's new.
Yeah.
I had no issues with it, it's, uh, it's interesting, actually, but the parking thing for me has always been, uh, you know, there's like, you don't change the driveway, you have four more cars.
Um, this is their letter. And, you know, they go right through it, each section of each part of the bylaw, your apartment will be a complete separate dwelling, they, and they have an answer.
They even gave us a.
Every, every single, every single point that's required in the bylaw, they put in here and they specify an answer to that question. So I, like I said, I thought they did a very thorough job.
The Chair would recommend, uh, would entertain a favorable recommendation of ZBA. So, question made by Mr. Cohen?
I don't.
Seconded by Mr. Benonato, any discussion in regards to that motion?
Mr. Peter, you answer it.
All is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero.
Would be a nice easy job, wouldn't it?
I know a lot of guys that do it.
Moving on our agenda, Town Planner update, Town Planner.
Uh, okay, we start with, uh, two invoices that we have to pay, uh, one is for O'Callaghan Planning Council, which is going towards the master plan, so there was a sixty thousand dollar grant we received through the One Stop, and this would basically be the final balance on that grant, so that grant's gonna zero out. So any remaining funds now, there's a secondary grant and funds that were approved at town meeting, so those fund, that's will get picked up, and that's through the Town Administrator's Office.
How are we doing through the process of opposing grants, so, and are we reporting back to the grant authority?
I have to, I have to, on a quarterly basis, give a report on every single grant that we have.
Okay.
So I give them a quarterly report on what the status is, there's, uh, usually it's a balance on what's, you know, on, uh, what's left of the grant. As we're approaching now the end of the fiscal year, I'm gonna reach out to our vendors and let them know that you need to give me your invoices.
Yeah, we don't want anything carried over.
We don't want anything carried over, so I'll be doing that, this one at least will zero out.
Yeah.
Once it zeros out, I, the next, um, the next quarter, which will be FY twenty-five, first quarter, I will submit a copy of the master plan along with, say, a final, um, quarterly report. And so the second, um, invoice is to J and R Graphics, the informational packets in the two, uh, boards you saw at town meeting. Uh, I had them print that up for us.
Okay.
Um, that kinda went through the budget.
If we, if we wanna do that again, Tony, we're gonna print those boards, the only, the, a lot of people, when I was standing there, there were a lot of people that were looking at that graph with all the buildings, and every, pretty much everybody said the same thing, that, that's what's being built there, that's what they're building, that's what's going in, so I don't know if we wanna make sure that we don't. I said, no, it's just an example, it's just, it's just a, it was a way to take up space, somebody said, somebody said, why didn't you guys have the, the layout? I said, I had to move it.
Yeah, it's, it's all food for thought.
Hindsight, whatever. Uh, any questions or comments in regards to these, uh, signature of these invoices?
You want a motion?
I know, I don't need to, cause you already gave me the, you already gave me the power.
Just ask, I don't, I don't, just trying to do the right thing.
Got it.
Uh, while you're doing that, Mr. Chair, I'll move on to, if you don't mind, I'll move on to the next one. So, uh, High Street Park, I received a letter from the Select Board on the, uh, on the, on the park, to sort of move things forward. So what I'd like to do is, uh, probably going to take that information and get it up on the webpage, our webpage and the town's webpage, so that at least people can see it, maybe get it out there into the ether. Also, um, trying to determine what's the best course of action as far as bringing it forth before the board. There had been talk last time at the, that the board was saying, you know, if you do a public hearing, obviously, you're gonna bring the public back in, they're gonna make comments in this, you could wind up starting from square one, and you seem to have done all of that already.
Right.
So, um, I just wanna be sure, I just wanna be sure, I'll probably just a quick question to Town Council, just to be sure that, well, what's done is done properly so that there's no questions asked. Um, but I'll be bringing that forward to the Planning Board.
So you say bringing it forward, like, we're gonna be looking at the plan?
Yes.
Um, so, I thought, I thought the lots were already, uh, pretty clear. You know, they're laid out, so why would the Planning Board be involved in anything beyond, you know, uh?
Well, it comes before the board, and, let's say we put it on the agenda, just for an example, for discussion purposes, we put it on the agenda as a pub, under the public meeting, so at least anyone can, so people know it's on the agenda, they can take a look at it.
Sure.
And at that point, it's up to the Chair whether they must allow comments.
Right.
And you just get, you get to see if, you know, what's being, what's gonna be done, you know, where the playground's gonna go, access, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, I just wanna be sure that we're doing it right, I don't want, you know, I don't wanna have, I, I don't wanna, Town Council say, well, no, you need to do that as a public hearing versus a public meeting.
Public meeting, right.
Yeah.
So another way to look at what I was saying before, though, uh, in light of that, like, let, let's say we have a public hearing, right, and we discuss it, the plan and all that other stuff. So other than, um, whatever zoning issues that the Planning Board would look at, right, like, uh, where the playground goes, uh, you know, how many, how many, how many benches are, is it, none of that concerns this board at all, right, because all the lots have been laid out. So I guess my only cautionary tale is, it's gonna be important to make sure that we don't allow the audience to start weighing in on stuff that absolutely doesn't even concern us.
Yeah.
You know, that's my, my thought, yeah, that's just my thought.
Mr. Allison, um, when we first started this project, uh, you're right, we can't go back and start changing things. So what Town Council told me, cause I asked him in the beginning how they handle this, and he said, well, what, what you have to do is like any other subdivision, what you do is you do the plan, the Planning Board has to go through the process of, like it was a subdivision, cause you're doing all the road, the drainage, and any water or any lighting or any of that stuff. And then, once that's done and that's blessed by the Planning Board, the Planning Board signs off on it, just the same as the other, and they get recorded.
Right, so we're only doing, that, that, that's the, the real point I'm trying to make, we're just doing the, um, you know, the infrastructure stuff.
That's correct.
So if somebody starts talking about how they think the, you know, the playground should be over this way or that way, that's not what we're.
No, the time for that would have been the six meetings.
Right.
That High Street Park committee had done.
I, I just think it's important for us to, at least me personally, to be aware of, you know, what is it that I'm supposed to be looking at, and why do I care about anything else other than that? I just wanna know how the sausage is made, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, to do it as a subdivision, that becomes a public hearing.
Right, yes.
That's advertised and so forth.
Butter notifications. It, it's just so that when it gets, it gets recorded at the registry of deeds and all that, that's according to Town Council, that's the way, cause I didn't think it had to be, but, you know, it does.
Okay.
We will, towards the end of it, uh, probably do a fundraiser for the bathroom naming ceremony. Oh, I'd like to mention on that, on that.
Mr. Allison.
That bathroom, um.
I was speaking to Jim.
No, um, I met with, with the people from the food pantry. I stopped and asked them one day if they could set up an appointment with the people that run the facility there, and went through with what you recommend, and we told them we weren't going to put, they didn't want it attached to the building adamantly, uh, because they were afraid that somebody will come in there because there'll be a water leak or some random reason to come in and steal some of the food and stuff like that, that's what they were afraid of. Basically, and they probably had other reasons, but that's what they mentioned, so I showed them the plan, the parking lot layout that, that was designed by Plan and Planning, uh, which hasn't been changed, I mean, it changed from what's there originally, and, um, they, they liked that. And I extoiled the building, the facility, the toilet areas, and put an extra void, and they liked that, so they were not, they didn't care about us putting it down like you made, uh, a statement to put it down by where the two roads come in together, the roadways, and they thought that would be fine, uh, they just didn't want it up there. So, and I had them sign off on it too, the two people were there, I had no clue who's who there, so, and, uh, that was done. Now, I've gotta get one to Black, to the Joe Weeks, so he can bring it to the, so I'll. Yeah.
Nice.
Um, I'm still pursuing the One Stop Grants, I have three that are relatively complete, I need to get some peripheral information, I'm working on the fourth. Those are due by the fifth of June, um, I, I may have to do a, maybe a two work from home day, just so there's the ability to just focus on the grants.
And no phone ringing?
Yeah, sometimes you get the, you know, squirrel, squirrel, shiny object kind of situation.
You get the Chair calling you?
Not at all.
Why, it's on a rope?
Uh, the other thing that's gonna be coming up is the Cannabis Control Commission has created regulations regarding the equity bylaw.
This has been some change, yeah.
And, uh, I've worked with Liz Linden, she's the one who's been providing information, she's been working with that, and I've reached out to her on occasion, once I, when I read information about it. So I'll be working with her, and maybe I can set up a time to have her come before the board, so she can explain, I'll probably a lot better than I can, what they're looking for, and what, if anything, we need to do, because we actually, they are requiring that we do something, another mandate.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, that's not, that's not too significant of a change, so.
It, it's, no, but there's.
Policy change.
It is, but it, you just have to really, uh, be in compliance, cause you could get fined if you're not. So that's the only thing, so that's just something to make the board aware that's gonna be coming, and I have information and I can email it to every one of you that was recent about sort of what they did, what the by, what they're looking for, uh, but I, I'd like to have Liz give you a good legal explanation. Um, it's not on the, I will bring back the, uh, Department Handbook, and we'll talk again about that article two dash seventeen of the general bylaw, which is the private, work on private ways. Um, and I think, oh, the, the earmarks that we had, which is, one of them is the hundred and seventy thousand dollar earmark, that was meant to be distributed between, uh, High Street Park, Bonny House, and, uh, the Boardwalk, that's gonna get submitted tomorrow, because if we don't, we're gonna lose the money.
Okay.
So I have a whole package together, uh, we had tried submitting as each part of it on its own, but they told us, no, it has to all come in for the, all three have to come together for the hundred and seven. So, uh, that's gonna go in, so that we can get the money, then you have till twenty twenty-seven to get it done. So the Park Committee will get some money, the Bonny House folks will get some money, the Boardwalk project gets some money. Um, if you distribute, if you even it out, each one gets just under fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, or they can fight over it in a wrestling match at Lattice Tables and Chairs and see who wins. The, there was another earmark for twenty-five thousand dollars, which was gonna go down to the Mont Ponce area, uh, towards the Hancock Park, that's been submitted, and the TA told me today that she had signed on the contract for that, so we'll get that money, and I've been working with the Parks, and I'm gonna get this, I think it's Parks and Fields, uh, Adam. And, uh, so they put together a, uh, estimate to include the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Nice.
And so I think the twenty-five thousand dollars will be sort of like a C money, and I'm going to speculate, they'll probably go to CPC, looking for the remainder. Yeah, looking for the remainder.
Hancock Street?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Um, so.
Adam Galachovich?
Yes, sir.
Nice.
So, uh, and they're looking to do some things like refurbish the basketball court, put in a bike rack, some benches, some tables, uh, maybe gra, uh, rake out the baseball field.
Lighting.
Uh, he might have mentioned, I'm not sure if the lighting was on there, I'm not gonna say yes, uh, so.
Mr. Allison, on the, on the park, on, uh, Hancock Street, you're doing mo, mostly just the field area?
It's just cosmetics. It's not brand new field or anything like that.
There's, uh, there's a lot across from it, of the, the, uh, field itself, where the basketball hoop is there too, that the town owns. And there's another lot that goes up Hancock Street, I'll bring that up on the chair. Yeah, and I was given to the town, I was gonna give it to the town, and I still am, um, for parking, cause they don't have any area up there for parking. And what happens when they have a little game?
On the side of the street, hit the fence and destroy it.
Right. So...
That's why people stopped using the park, because the people around there were upset that they were parking in front of their houses.
Right, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And it caused fights and the cops went down.
Well, what happened with, on my end was that...
You jumped with a log right there on the corner, dog?
Yeah, yeah, right here, right where that hand is. That corner there goes fifty feet to the, off of Union Park.
At two dash seven six six?
It's a five thousand square foot block, basically, which, which way, which way? On, on the, all right there, where, where it says forty eight hundred?
Oh, on the further corner?
Yeah, two dash seven six four. I own that, the town owns the other one, that's a two seven six six.
Yes, the town owns these two pieces and...
So, what, what the, what the, and this is probably, I don't know, ten years ago.
If you combine two lots.
What I wanted to do was include all those two on the corner
For the house?
for parking, or whatever you might have needed, an area to put, you know, you know, the equipment in and stuff.
Problem with that one is, um, two seven zero and two seven...
I went to, I went to the CPC and said, you know, I'd like to give it to you, and town meeting approved that. And then they said, well, when you gonna start, dog? And I said, excuse me?
Start?
Yeah, well, see, they don't do it, CPC doesn't do the park area, they just give you the money, and I didn't understand that in the beginning. So it's up to me to come out and try and get people to donate money and time and everything else to do with the park, which I didn't know at the time, and I said, I don't have time to do it, so I tried to get a couple of people down there to, to volunteer.
Got it.
And here we go, so then I got involved in, then we got involved in the state park, I said, I told, um, your wife, I said, because she asked me one day, how come I didn't go forward, and I said, well, I will go forward as soon as it's gonna be a park, because my, my fear is that it should be for the park, but there was talk about using that field and that every, and, and that land for sewer, uh, sewage treatment for the people down there.
We're gonna keep it a park. That's, that's an old plan, I remember that.
There's a couple, there's a couple of them.
You know.
That's a great idea, use that for parking. Do you want us to pass that on to Adam Velachovic?
Cool.
Parks and Rec, right?
He broached, he broached that subject at CPC meeting, and I told him that, um, I don't have enough knowledge to weigh in on that, so, uh, he, he's gonna go to the assessors office, I'm gonna assume, when somebody start asking questions about who owns what and where, and...
Perfect.
You know, cause I, I said to him, if you come up with a good plan, right, uh, and then execute it, you know, like, think of everything you can.
Yeah.
See if you can stuff it all in there, get some money to get it done, cause it's, you know, it's a worthy cause, it's a, it lacks a place for it to go and play.
That's right, it's a great area for a, a playground for the kids in that neighborhood, but it's just shattered now, it's just been just...
It's just like sitting there forgotten.
With the light of that.
Town, you know, would love to see it go back to where it should be, I would think.
So, so...
Even if you use one of the lots, we really have to...
We're gonna get...
Swings and stuff like that.
We're gonna get twenty five grand at least, so then they can add, you know, that, so there's money. Uh, Bonny House, um, we sort of had to work through that to put something together. Um, but we had something for the park, and, uh, we had something for the boardwalk, so I was able to use some of the numbers there and put it all together. So at least we'll get it, we'll have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to do something, do some things with.
Cool, so none of these, um, grants require, like, I, I know they have a plan for the Bonny House, right? And there's, obviously someone's created a plan for the boardwalk, um, so what about the rest of it? You know what I mean? It's like, uh, are there, is there a plan for what they're gonna do? Look, does the state wanna know what they're gonna do with the money? You know, like the twenty five, you're gonna put it to the spark?
Yes, when you submit your earmark, you give them a scope of work and/or a budget, so, so that's what they, they're gonna get. They'll get basically the scope of work with the costs associated with it.
Oh, so they will.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ellis. Are, are they gonna save the field as a baseball field, or are they gonna change that?
No.
Or what?
They, they keep, they keep ends of field, yeah. Uh, that's all I have, uh, on the town.
Thank you very much, Tony, appreciate it. Uh, entertaining motion for the next planning board meeting to be scheduled for Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM.
Sure.
Yes, motion made by Mr. Ellis.
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Cohen, any discussion regards to that motion? Any concerns about tenants?
No, it's two weeks, three weeks away, three weeks, four weeks.
All is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Anybody have anything for good or bad? I would like to make a comment, just to have it recorded, uh, sad, sad news, uh, over this weekend. If anybody had heard that over at Eastlake, uh, there was an overturned kayak, uh, fortunately it was a victim that had drowned. But I'd like to make a mention, uh, to the absolute outstanding performance that our town Hanson Fire Department employees did over at, uh, over at Eastlake. Uh, Chief O'Brien and his team were phenomenal in their, uh, watercraft rescue, so that's, their training is, is, is bar none to anybody else that performs that types of duties and, and includes them for their performance. An unfortunate, unfortunate outcome, I'm sure that they would have liked to have had something different, but I wanted to make sure that we mention here in a public forum that we are always very proud of, of our, our emergency services. Any to, motion to adjourn?
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Kevitt, seconded by Mr. Cohen, any discussion in regards to adjournment?
Sure.
No, it is?
Seven fifty.
Fifty, we are adjourned. Oh, uh, sorry, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose. Motion carries five to zero, seven fifty, we are adjourned.